Could you put it out now?
I just got it.
Move to do it right now.
People are on the email.
It is what it is, right?
Yeah, there's nothing on TV. Thirteen X.
That's only on Amazon Prime.
Oh, really?
If you want to watch, I have it.
No, 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 that's okay. I'm not really a typical.
Well, let's go ahead and start the meeting. Andrew, we haven't met. I'm Richard Mangi, the chair. We are very glad that you were able to come and chat with us about about housing and what Twin Pines is doing for housing in the Upper Valley and helping meet some of the need of housing.
He came back early. It was honeymoon, just to be here.
Okay, what time zone are you in right now?
I'm fine. I'm fine. It's been a week. I'm good to go.
So for folks who, we may have one or two folks on Zoom and maybe some others will come in a little later. We have Andrew Winter with Twin Pines Housing Trust.
Trust.
Who's going to talk to us a little bit about, I think, the need, barriers, some economic factors, and perhaps characteristics of affordable housing. And maybe what makes it a little bit different from other conventional housing. And so, thank you for coming, and without further ado, we'll let you go ahead and
Okay.
speak with us. I think you have a presentation.
I do. I thought it would be a good idea just to do the presentation, kind of give you some visuals, some pictures. We can kind of run through it at any speed. Feel free to just blur it out, use your hand. You know, wiggle, wiggle, wiggle your ear if you want me to stop and explain anything. And obviously, there'll be time, you know, plenty of time to go through questions. So there's seventeen slides, so this, if you wanna
I'm just trying to get it to
fill the screen. There we go.
There we go.
So this is, I'll just mention that this is seventeen units of Town Home Project that we finished a couple of years ago on Sykes Mountain Avenue in Hartford. This is a mixture of ones, twos, and threes. The, you know, you'll, as we kind of go through this, you're gonna see a variety of different styles and types of housing. Often with affordable housing, we like to sometimes do flat roofs. Why? Because we like to have solar on it, and sometimes it's easier to do solar on buildings. And we'll kind of touch on that as we go through the deck. But this, this gives you kind of one visual of what, what a project might look like. And again, this is sort of, you know, one or two floor units. There's some, some two bedrooms where somebody comes in on the first floor and goes up to the bedrooms on the second floor. So that's right there on Sykes Mountain Avenue, not far from where all the dealerships have gone. So just a little bit about us. We've been around, we're coming up on, on our thirty-fifth next year. We have, at this point, six hundred and sixty-five rental units. And that really sort of ranges from everything from what we call workforce housing, which we'll talk about, to family, to, to sort of non-age-restricted housing, general occupancy housing, to seniors. And then we also have projects for the homeless and the veterans, and we'll touch on some of those in the mix. These are projects that we've done, and again, kind of picking up on that flat roof theme. Summer Park, Vicky knows because she was still working for the Town Hanover when we were going through the permitting construction process there. This is when the first phase of Summer Park was going on, so this is right across from the high school. And this is a project where, thanks to support from the Town Hanover, we were able to acquire an existing twenty-four units of senior housing, redevelop it. And actually, by building a new building in two pieces, and actually increase the number of units from twenty-four to forty-two. And so forty-two units of senior housing. And some of those units are subsidized, meaning the rents are, the rents are, the rent amounts are set. Residents pay thirty percent of their income, and then the difference between that, that rent amount and what the resident can afford, thirty percent of their income is picked up by the federal government. Sometimes people use the shorthand of Section Eight. There are a variety of programs. We have a whole host of programs at the federal level that kind of do the same thing. But we generally refer to all of that collectively as subsidized housing. Tracy Street, I'll just mention up there. We, we have tried to be very, very energy efficient, and, and we're doing it in different ways. So Summer Park and Tracy Street are both what we call passive house projects. So these are projects where we build super-energy-efficient buildings. They're certified by the Passive House Institute of the United States, which means they typically are gonna use seventy-five, eighty-five percent less energy than the typical code-compliant building because we're doing super-thick walls, we're getting R sixty, you know, on the roof, R forty walls, R twenty at the foundation. We're spending a lot of time air sealing, so you're not getting air infiltration. And we typically are moving triple-glazed windows. Residents, Summer Park is interesting enough, were really worried. They were like, oh, we're gonna be moving closer to, to the noise of Lebanon Street, right, right across from high school. And in fact, now that they're all there, they're like, you know, we don't hear anything. Because you've got triple-glazed windows, really thick walls, and very little bit of a cusical
And use heat pumps?
Yeah, so most of the technology, so Summer Park, passive house doesn't require that we use only electric or heat pumps for heating. But we do use them for heating and cooling in both these projects. Tracy Street is actually an even fancier attempt to try to get to net zero. So by net zero, we mean that's the solar panels that you see on that building, which are up at the, you know, the parapet. You see those there. There's, the roof covers them. There's some on the facade of the building, and there's a solar arbor in front of the building. If you kind of look back, you know, in the, in the back, towards the back end of the building, there's an arbor there as well. There are three hundred and thirty solar panels in all. And that generates, doesn't quite, this was a first attempt. Nobody else had done this in northern New England. Certainly not on this scale. And so, we didn't quite get there in part because, you know, everybody makes assumptions around energy use, consumption, how people are going to use the space. You know, the temperatures, we can kind of control somewhat. But there's, there's stuff that people do that may generate more demand on the system than what we projected. So, but kind of fun to talk about a bunch of different concepts that we're trying to get there. Yes?
Why are the solar panels flat?
So the ones on the roof are not. The ones on the parapet, the top wall there, they actually, believe it or not, they are slightly tilted in. In part because this, this is not something that you see a lot around in this part of the world because generally, you know, you're, you're trying, we may very well put solar in a community solar array. We may put it someplace else. We may ground down it. But here, we were trying to put it on the building because we didn't really have a lot of room elsewhere on the site. And by doing it there, we tilted it in, and so that way, if there's snow or anything like that, it can roll off to the inside rather than down, something down below.
Right. No, I just thought they were supposed to face south.
Yeah, so this building, so one of the things we really liked about this building, so this is a photo in the afternoon. So you're getting, you're getting the west sun on that west-facing facade. But this is actually, this building is perfectly oriented for solar because it runs, the long side runs south-facing, so.
But the ones that we can't see are tipped up?
Yeah, they're tipped up. And then on the facade, you can get bi-facial, essentially, I'm not using the right term, but you're nodding as if
Yeah, two-sided.
Yeah, so they are, they are two-sided solar. So even though they're mounted on the face and the sun is shining on them this way, there is, any reflection on the back is going to kind of, you will get some solar gain from the back as well. But again, trying this technology in northern New England was kind of a test, if you will. And things, hopefully a lesson, you know, for, an inspiration for others to kind of try to, to do this. I think there's actually a similar project in elsewhere in New Hampshire going on right now to do this. So I'm gonna keep going. Huge need. There is something called Keys of the Valley, which the original planning commissions did in this area of, of New Hampshire in Vermont. And they identified the need for ten thousand housing units by 2030. I don't think I need to tell everybody, really low vacancy rate rates, high prices. You know, gross rents doubled, wages, you know, have remained flat until recently. And, you know, even then, inflation has been a factor in making people feel like, wow, housing is really expensive. And then, you know, we've got the challenge in certain communities in our region with a very high percent of second and seasonal homes. So, you know, Woodstock, I always like to pick on Woodstock. Sixty percent, nearly sixty percent of the homes are second and seasonal. Which really means that if you are an employee looking for a place to live near work, you're not gonna find it. If you're an employer looking to bring people in, not gonna find it, not gonna find something that is going to really be able to, you know, work for, for people coming in, particularly in the service sector. So other examples on what things can kind of look like, Colla Drive in Wilder, that's eighteen units. That was, that project is a little bit, about twenty-two years old. And then Safran Commons is in Woodstock. That project is sort of an effort to try to integrate it into the larger community. This is a site on West Woodstock. It was the subject of years of litigation. And we did twenty rental units there. We now have actually four homeownership units. You'll see, we're gonna add some homeownership units there. It looks great. Everybody says, could build me this? And I say, super expensive, and both expensive to build and expensive to operate. So that's one of the challenges with doing affordable housing these days. So we've been kicking around a bunch of terms. We talk about housing as being affordable when the common metric is people should be paying less than thirty percent of a family's income towards housing. A lot of people are paying thirty-five, forty, forty-five, fifty percent. But that has historically been used as kind of the target. Eligibility for housing, affordable housing is based on household size and income. We'll actually look at some numbers to kind of see how the numbers differentiate between Grafton County, Windsor County across the river, Merrimack County, we're doing some project, we're doing a project in Merrimack as well. And it really does vary from county to county, but it always varies within a county based on household size. So part of the numbers that we talk about are area median income. So half earn more, half earn less. That is the, the median. Not the average, the median. Subsidized, we talked a little bit about, thirty percent of the income. We use shorthand for Section Eight. But again, there are a variety of different programs. U.S. Department of Agriculture has a program, a rental subsidy program that we use. There are senior housing projects that use two-on-two programs. It doesn't exist anymore except for in very, very limited numbers. And so on. So there's a variety of different subsidized housing programs. But again, they're always typically focused on residents paying thirty percent of their income. Recently, the feds have kind of raised, over the last few years, they have raised the minimum. So there were people who literally their incomes were so low, they were paying nothing. And now, the fed, federal government requires that everybody pay at least something. So even if somebody has very, very low, extremely low income, fifteen thousand dollars a year, they're still gonna be paying fifty dollars a month. Now, you know, if you're living on fifteen thousand dollars a year, fifty dollars a month probably feels like a lot. But those are the rules that we, we work with. Workforce housing? The term gets thrown around different ways. Typically, nationally, it's up to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. And we'll, we'll look at what that actually plays out as, as we kind of go through. But all of these projects, as affordable housing, the rents are typically at or below sixty percent of, of the area median income. So people's, you know, we set the price that we charge based on what somebody at sixty percent of the area median income can afford, paying thirty percent of their income. Lots of, lots, lots of numbers thrown around there, I realize. So just thought it'd be helpful to kind of see some new properties. Some of you may have heard of some of these projects. Some of them were, you know, definitely spent some time in the newspaper. Seven forty-seven Hartford Avenue, this is a project that we did in the Upper Valley Haven. This is when we were doing our, you know, ribbon cutting. And in early September, people had moved in in October, and we expect to be fully occupied by the end of November. And so this is a unique project in that it is serving chronically homeless individuals. That is, that is a defined term under federal law. And so those are the folks who are low income, who have had repeated bouts of homelessness or twelve, or, or have been homeless for more than twelve months, plus have a disability of some kind. And with this project, part of the reason we put it next to the Haven, or it is right next, it is literally on the Haven campus, is because people are gonna be coming directly from the Haven's adult shelter. They have a priority for this housing. And everybody who gets there has access to a full range of services provided by the Upper Valley Haven. So we're really excited about that. This builds on a similar project that we did in Lebanon, like a few years ago.
Is there a residency, or how long a term do, do folks stay in that?
Yeah, so great question. On that one, people are actually there. It is not transitional. It is considered what we call permanent supportive housing. And so supportive in the sense that we're providing services, in this case, through the Upper Valley Haven. And, but it is permanent housing, so people can be there. You know, they move in, they can be there six months, they can be there sixty years, probably be there sixty years. But, but, you know, our experience has been that, you know, for some people, it is, it is a stepping stone to other, maybe other properties elsewhere in our portfolio, larger units. The units are smaller. They're, they're about four hundred and ninety, ninety-five square feet. Those are one-bedroom units. And the typical apartment that you might go out and rent, one-bedroom apartment in a, in a modern building might be six hundred and fifty square feet by comparison. So it works really well for a single person, and particularly if you're a single person who's maybe coming out of the woods, as some of the folks that we're housing are, you know, are doing. And so for them, you know, getting housing stability, building success, living in, kind of get housing like this, multifamily housing like this, they will move on to, to other properties in our portfolio. So this is another project right, this one's right on the river, right on the Connecticut River, where Route Four crosses from Old West Lebanon to White River. And Listen Community Center has, has their building on the left side. And then on the right, DEW Construction had been working, redeveloping, and they built the State Office Building back there. And, and there's visiting nurses for the Upper Valley are back there. And so this site was the last piece of it, and this building houses forty-two units. A little bit different here is that this was done as a turnkey. Meaning DEW and their partner Braverman built the building. And we bought it when it was, call it ninety-seven percent complete. So we had put together all the financing. We worked with them on the front end to design the building, but they built it. And then once it was complete, we bought it once complete. So mixed studios, ones, twos, and threes, fully leased at this point. We've got some units, four units, where the Upper Valley Haven provides services. And four units where we actually have clients of the VA living there. And we try to do some veterans' housing. We haven't done a standalone veterans' housing project. We tend to do projects working with vets where you get four vets here, four vets there, smaller numbers. But we have the next project.
What can I just ask about this one?
Yeah, sure.
So do you like this model better where it's built for you rather than having to do the construction management?
Yeah, you know, it, interestingly, it felt sort of like we were doing almost the same amount of construction management. And, but with a little bit less control in some cases, because, because it's already designed. They're like, okay, well, this, this is what you agreed to, and this is the design, and, you know, and all the features and amenities. And so if you're trying to change things, add things, it, it often feels like a little more cumbersome. But, you know, one of the challenges with affordable housing is cost. And this, this is actually, I'm, I'm going from sort of the most expensive, which was the first one on a period basis, this is sort of the middle-priced one, and then the least expensive is the next one because we're always trying to figure out ways to do housing.
Did they meet your energy standards?
Yeah, so, so in Vermont, this, this, so we didn't use passive house here. We used something called the Efficiency Vermont High Performance Home. And so that's a very, that's a pretty rigorous standard as well. It's not as rigorous as, as passive house. But it is the standard to which most of the affordable housing buildings are getting built in Vermont.
Who, typically, who do you get to build?
Yeah, so, so the first, so seven forty-seven was Ingram Construction, which is a company that we have used out, did Summer Park. They did a project for the Lebanon Housing Authority called Heater Road, which is right by the Heater Road V H Clinic facility. And so this one was DEW, a big construction firm. And then, and then the next one was actually Estes in Gallo, so.
And this one in White River, did that have, did that have solar? Was that?
Yeah, so that one has solar as well, but not as much as, like, as the, as the other one that we did. So not, Tracy Street, Tracy Street's next level, trying to do three hundred and thirty. And so that, that'll have, like, maybe we spent a hundred and forty thousand dollars on solar. So, you know, it's there, it will generate, I'll be interested to see, it's just started up in October. So we'll see how much of a difference it makes over the coming year.
Because I would think that these taller buildings have pretty good solar exposure. You're just, you're not subject to trees and
Not subject to trees, you know, flat roof, they're easy. You run a conduit. You'll see, I'll show a couple of other properties, the projects that we're trying to do where we, we do it. Not everything works. You know, this is a perfect example. So this is, this is, this is sort of a, a construction photo. It's finished now, but Mountain Vale, this is where we took the former field in, right at the junction of eighty-nine and ninety-one. The company that owns it, the guy who owned it, he and his family own a number of these hotels, say, on the Hampton Inn next door. And he was like, get me out of Vermont. He was feeling like he, he has a bunch of properties in Florida, and he was feeling like now's a good time for me to sell some of these hotels, coming out of COVID, less demand, fewer business travelers. And so he, and there are a lot of hotels right at that intersection, and so, right at that junction. And so he came to us and said, what do you think? I said, okay, this is, this is actually a pretty good building because it's only twenty years old. And, you know, kind of, it's the same sort of typical rectangular box that double-loaded corridor, rooms on each side, central corridor, makes it, makes it for a pretty efficient building when you're trying to save cost. So this, this, converting this, buying it, and then converting it, we probably saved a third per unit over what, you know, the other projects were costing us. A third to forty percent, fifty percent. So this was a much, much more, you know, cost-effective way to add units. Not everybody's gonna want this, but it's full, and it's, and it filled, ended up filling up. I was a little nervous at one point, but it ended up filling up pretty quickly. Interesting enough, studio units, not always popular. And so we're always talking about, like, you know, doing added studios in the next project because they're just a little harder, which, so, anyway. This, but this has, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just, what, I know it's hard to answer this, but what's an average, what's your average cost for sort of an average unit? I mean, I know it varies a lot, but like a one-bedroom?
Yeah, so, so it's a little, so it's, 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 the number, I'm gonna give you a number, and it's gonna blow your mind. And then you're gonna, and then I'm gonna have to explain why that number is so high.
This is for a brand-new building?
For a brand-new building, if you could build a unit for four hundred thousand dollars per unit, that's a pretty good number.
For a single or one-bedroom?
For one or, I, you know, and again, I'm not really differentiating between one-bedroom or two-bedroom. You know, the one-bedroom's gonna cost you less, you know, because your square footage is less, but
So that might be around seven hundred square feet or six hundred square?
Yeah, so the one-bedrooms typically, we're doing between six hundred and six hundred and fifty square feet. A two-bed, a two-bedroom might be seven twenty-five to seven fifty. A three-bedroom, you're looking at nine and a quarter, somewhere in there. Typically, when you get to a three-bedroom, you're gonna have, you know, either a bath and a half, a bath three-quarters, so you're gonna try to add another bathroom in there. So that kind of raises your cost. But, but the, but, so having said that, you know, we sometimes, you know, people will say, oh, well, you know, I bought my house in nineteen seventy, which was sixteen thousand dollars, and I don't understand why everything's four hundred thousand dollars. But if, if you are, you know, if you are trying to build a house today, you are probably looking at construction costs of, you know, three fifty, four hundred, four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
At least, at least.
And we're doing it, we're still doing it, and it's less than that. But what we're also doing, in addition to building the building, is we front-load a lot of, we put in place a, what, a six-month operating reserve. So, so in addition to, to, you know, all of the other accounting accounts that we have, we will have six worth, six months' worth of monies sitting there. So if you, if you say, okay, this property is going to cost me, you know, five hundred thousand dollars a year to operate, expense-wise, we'll have, we'll have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting in the reserve account. And we're, you know, doing a replacement reserve, which is often capitalized so that if a boiler goes, or something goes in winter, whatever, we're going to be able to have the funds immediately available to take care of it. So we're kind of front-loading a lot of those expenses into the budget, which makes it somewhat deceptive to kind of compare it apples to oranges, because it's really not apples to apples. Most market-rate property owners, they're not capitalizing all of those dollars. They're not putting them in a bank account. And they may be pulling money from another property, they may refinance. Once we finance, put our financing in place, it is locked in for fifteen years. We cannot touch it. So it means that you've kind of got to think about anything that may come up for the next fifteen years on the front end, which does have cost implications.
So, so just for, for clarity, when you say you're thinking about four hundred thousand for a, for a unit, that's capitalizing all those upfront expenses?
Correct.
So that
Our developer fees in there, so, you know, it's developers' fees, it's, it's all the engineering, it's all of the architectural, it's all of the actual physical construction.
Sure.
And it's all those reserve accounts. And we'll talk a little bit more about the financing, but we're putting all of that in there. And because generally, you know, if you're charging on affordable rent, eight fifty, nine fifty, ten fifty, eleven fifty a month, depending on whether you're including heat and water, there's not a lot of cash being generated there. And because we're having to keep it affordable, we don't have the ability to go, okay, this year, you know, we're gonna raise our price five percent, ten percent. And, and so we're kind of locked in at a relatively lower rate of return for the work that we do on the front end, which means that that developer fee we get paid when we're doing these projects becomes even more important, so.
True, right.
So we're kind of capitalizing that on the front end, too.
Are these properties tax, tax favored?
So they, they are tax advantaged in the sense that both New Hampshire and Vermont have statutes that tax projects like these, which are financed through something, we're gonna talk about, called the Low Income Housing Tax Credit. So they, they do pay taxes. You know, I'm happy to say, I think some, this year, our property tax bill was, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars, somewhere around there. So it's, you know, it's, it is, people here are nonprofit, and you think, we're not paying taxes? No, we're paying taxes. We're, we're a big taxpayer. No, we're paying taxes, we're, we're a big taxpayer.
But you know, how does that, I'm just trying to figure this out. Let's say an eighteen unit building, and it costs you, let's say, three million dollars to build or whatever. So then you're renting it, say, a thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
So you're getting, what, two hundred thousand dollars a year?
Correct.
So how does that work for three million? I mean, you don't get your money back, right?
Yeah.
It would take you seventy five years to get your money back.
Yeah, so so we we have a different financing mechanism here. And I'm just gonna show you a couple more pictures just to kind of talk about some of the stuff that you may have been out or heard. This is, yeah, this is Melish Wood. This is a senior housing project in Woodstock, right on Main Street or Pleasant Street as you go into town. So if you know where Shire's motel is, or the right as you go on Route Four, across from what used to be Max Market and is now Woodstock Central Market, this is right next door. So and it was developed back in the nineteen seventies, and we bought it in twenty twenty two. And we are renovating the two historic buildings in the front. There are two buildings that were built by Trumbull Nelson in the back in the nineteen seventies. And we're taking both of those down, one immediately and the other later on after this building is built. Part of what we're trying to do is figure out, as we had to do in Hanover, how to, how to renovate a property and keep people housed, and how to add new housing while keeping people housed. The market's so tight, and we're really mindful, we have to be mindful of displacing people during that renovation process. So in, you know, as Vicki knows, in Hanover, we had three buildings from the nineteen seventies. We built a new building, we relocated everybody from the three nineteen seventies era buildings into the new building, and then demolished those three buildings, which allowed us to build out the parking and stormwater detention, and then add another wing of the building to add eighteen more units. So, you know, again, we're kind of doing almost the same thing here, trying to minimize displacement. We'll, we'll, you know, at this point, I think, probably end up having to move two to three people off site, and that's it. Build the new building and then move everybody back and everybody from the existing buildings into the new building while we demolish the nineteen seventies era buildings and rehouse the two historic.
Now, that was like the main concern for the residents in Hanover when they, you know, just did the conceptual phase about what the building was even gonna look like, is like, I don't wanna move more than once.
Yeah, and that was, that was like, I went in and said, we're gonna figure out how to do this once.
But there was a lot of handholding that Twin Pines did, meeting with the residents, like, almost monthly, just to let them know what was going on and hear this again and again and again. So I think all in all, everyone's pretty happy.
I think so.
In Hanover.
Yeah, the big, I'll tell you, the biggest problem I have right now is washers and dryers, but that's a story for another day.
Can I ask you about the the solar? Does anyone in Hanover that?
Yeah, and actually, if you wanna go back to the last picture, so this one, this is interestingly enough, so, sorry to interrupt. This, this, this has sort of a, it may not look that, the angle's a little deceptive, but it's a mansard style roof. So it's actually got a little less pitched than I think maybe represented here or the way it's reading here.
Mansard is like barn.
Yeah, and but but we were able to do the roof line pretty flat. So we're gonna be able to do solar up there, which is, ends up being a really nice condition.
I mean, everybody at residential was mounting solar panels on sloped roofs. I'm not understanding the flat roof issue.
Yeah, I mean, you can do it, and we have it in some places. It's just, you know, do you have the right orientation? Do you have enough? Can you put it on? So for instance, if you go, if you thought back to that seven forty seven picture, the one with the chairs in front, the building runs north, south. So the primary faces, the primary roof line is east and west, trees on the east. And so like, I went and said, you know, what do you think? And they're like, dude, you know, you're better off saving your money and, you know, investing in a solar project someplace else. Because the amount of space by the time you've got the dormer, you know, shed door roof, windows and all, there was not a lot of roof to work with, which is why I sort of have, sometimes can have a bias, like, my bias is flat. Because I can put more stuff up there, and I can put the equipment up there, and I can put solar up there and kind of get it looking a little bit neater. But we do, we definitely do solar.
So does that four hundred thousand per unit include the solar? Does it seem like in Hanover, that solar was an add on that I think Town Meeting?
Yeah, solar was an add on and.
In Hanover?
Yeah, it was an add on and 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 the town's money, as you recall, at the end, was was the.
Right, and paid for it.
Would pay for it, but but that, that, even though that, that project was built closer to two fifty a unit, which, which is indicative, so that project, Summer Park, senior units completed in twenty twenty.
Three years ago, four years ago?
Twenty twenty, yeah, so it was, it was March, it was, the first project was October of twenty twenty two, twenty twenty. Because it was during COVID, and we had to move everybody, and we had to, you know, wear masks, deal with all that. Let's not go back there again. And it, that was, that was more like two fifty, and then maybe the next one was a little bit closer to two eighty five. But but we were able to use the town's money. But it kind of gives you a sense of, like, if that's where the price was, we really did see a very significant increase in construction costs since COVID.
Right, well, you guys were having a hard time sourcing too.
Sourcing's been a problem, labor is a huge problem, continues to be a huge problem.
But even on that project, sourcing was bad and prices were not really crazy.
So stupid question, when you say like four hundred dollars a square foot, is that like the footprint? Or if it's like a two story building, it's like four hundred for a year or four hundred?
Living, living space, I think.
And so the four hundred dollars per square foot was was actually, if you wanted to go and, you know, redo, you know, add in addition to your house, don't be surprised if somebody quotes you for, you know, when you say, I wanna add, you know, five hundred square feet, you may, you know, to your living space, they'll say, okay, that'll be, that'll be two hundred thousand dollars. That's what I was talking about.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so if it's a ten by ten and then a ten by ten on top of it?
There, there, it is more efficient, it is absolutely more efficient. But but we're, we're still probably in the two, in our space, we're probably paying closer to two fifty a square foot. You know, maybe two seventy five. So we're, we're still getting a better price per square foot. It's just, everything is so expensive. And energy codes, if we have building codes, you know, are are more rigid. And so, you know, we have all kinds of bells and whistles in these buildings, if they've got elevators. You know, and one of the things we really wanted with Summer Park, and what we're excited about with Melish Wood, none of those buildings existing, they're all senior housing, and none of them had the, the prior versions had elevators. And people are living longer, and they're often more sickly and more frail and, you know, as they age. And so, you know, if you've got people who are ninety years old, living in your affordable housing, and you don't have an elevator, they are shut, they are not going out and getting out on a regular basis, and that's a, that's a problem.
So when you say two fifty and two seventy five a square foot, that's your actual construction cost?
Yeah.
Was no, that doesn't include subsidies, right? That's our tax rate money, that's just.
No, that's, that's what we're paying, and I'll.
But it costs more than that to actually do it, because I was gonna say, how can you do it for two hundred and thirty?
No, you got architects and engineers, and and you've got planning and acquisition costs, and you've got a whole bunch of other costs that we're gonna raise, you know, raise it up, so.
Yeah, it's a huge, yeah.
Yeah. This, this is one you may have read in the paper as well. We are waiting approval on municipal water, down at the bottom. Sixty units workforce housing. This is, I'd like to say a poster child for everything that can go wrong around water in trying to develop housing. We started this project at a time when the town had, they have a water precinct that serves a very small portion of Springfield and all of New London. And at the time, the precinct had sufficient water. And there was another project that that actually had started ahead of us, an assisted living project on the grounds of the New London Hospital. And they had had multiple conversations with the water precinct about water. And then the precinct, you know, very, very late in the process, I think it was the week or two before we were set to get our final site plan approval, they said, we got a problem. We're not gonna be able to give you water, we can only give you water for sprinkler fire protection. And so in our case, our project and the projects across the street, we all went ahead and ended up putting wells in. And then we found there was on the New London Hospital site, that the groundwater across the street, not ours, had been contaminated by P C E, which is a dry cleaning solvent. And so New Hampshire law, not gonna be able to sell water ever, they're never gonna license that, those wells. And so we, across the street, don't wanna take that liability on spreading the contamination. So we went back to the precinct, precinct said, nope, still think we've got a problem. Same meeting, they approved another application for a smaller multifamily building. And so we are appealing that right now. We'll have a hearing two weeks from today, so.
And is there a distribution, you know, is there a problem that the, the distribution system doesn't work? Or they actually can't?
Their concern, their, their concern is around, as I understand it, is around the overall capacity of the system. That they feel like, they're licensed for nine hundred and sixty thousand gallons per day by the state of New Hampshire. And they are concerned that, that over time, the, the amount of water that they can pull from the wells has decreased. They, we've heard conflicting testimony, whether they're seven fifty, seven hundred fifty thousand gallons a day, five hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day, five hundred thousand.
So it's a yield issue, not a treatment issue?
It's a, it's a yield issue, and, you know, it's, it's, it's complicated, and it's the source of some litigation sort of. Much more into it than than to say, you know, we were, we were, we were stunned by, you know, the, the response from the water precinct. And we have not put in nearly the money that the, that assisted living project, which was, they were looking at two hundred units of assisted living. And, you know, had, has expended millions of dollars, and they're out of luck as well. So here's an example, actually, this is a good one, of, of solar. You'll see solar panels up on the roof. How can you get a lot of solar up there with with this kind of a roof line? But we were, this is, I showed you the picture in Woodstock. So now we're adding some buildings there for some homeownership. These are duplexes, so, you know, two, two bedrooms in a single building. And those will be breaking ground this spring, so, because we do homeownership in addition to rental.
Does that mean then there's restrictions on purchase?
Yeah, who, who purchases it, how they use it, no Airbnb.
Then when they sell, if they wanted to sell, buy back?
Right, so when, when, when they sell, what we do is, we call it a shared equity arrangement. So we have this at Guile Hill, we have a hundred and twenty units at Guile Hill. And we've got forty four ownership units up there, seven of which have these restrictions. So basically seventy five percent of the appreciation stays with the home. The person selling the home gets to take twenty five percent. Plus, if they made improvements to it that we've approved, they get to take that as well. So it, it keeps it affordable in the long term.
Kind of like Habitat for Humanity in a way.
You know, interestingly enough, they don't use this model, except one project where, actually a couple of projects where we've collaborated with Habitat. And we have our financing from the state of Vermont in the projects, and so we keep it. Because normally Habitat just allows people to sell a home, you know. There may be some restriction in terms of like what they do if it's like in the first five years. But but ultimately, they don't have a long term restriction, whereas the stuff that we're doing is permanently affordable.
Yeah, because we get Habitat year nine.
Yeah.
Like, I thought there was some, I can't remember where it was.
Yeah, and 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 again, I think there are some shorter restrictions, but the longer term restriction.
So so could you repeat that again? So what is the period of time that, that there are restrictions? And what is the restriction that keeps it affordable, you know, fifty years from now?
Yeah, so so imagine you bought a house for two hundred thousand dollars. And now you're going to sell it for three hundred thousand dollars. So you have a hundred thousand dollars of appreciation. You're gonna, if you're the seller, you get twenty five thousand dollars of that appreciation. But Twin Pines is gonna get seventy five thousand dollars of appreciation. We're not gonna, we're not gonna ask for that money, we're not using that money to pay my salary or anybody else. It's actually staying in the property as a soft second. So so somebody coming in to buy that new unit, they're, they're not gonna pay three hundred thousand, they're gonna pay two twenty five. So price is going up from two hundred to two twenty five. The next buyer is going to buy essentially a home at, you know, a significant discount from market rate.
And and do you have experience with, is the twenty five percent, has that proven to be?
A model that works.
A model that works, yeah. Or is it like, oh, well, it's still too much, I mean, you know?
Yeah, no, it, it works, it works well for us. I will say, as a general matter, it works well for us as the party trying to keep it affordable. You know, if this were a market where people were, you know, I, I think the challenge right now is finding properties that people can bring into this program. Because this is, often, we develop some new, new units, but we often will bring existing homes into the program where the buyers go out, we give them essentially a grant money to, you know, eighty thousand dollars worth of grant money to buy down the cost of it. So that, you know, if it's a three hundred thousand dollar home, they're paying two twenty. And there aren't a lot of homes like that. Like, we're really struggling in this market to find those homes.
And then what assures, what assurance is there that you're gonna continue to purchase the home?
Yeah, so.
Provide the seventy five percent?
So what we do is, I, I mentioned, I use the term soft second. So, you know, Massoma Bank, Ledger Bank, whoever has the primary mortgage on it, we record a second mortgage. And so we have essentially a restrictive covenant that goes with the home. So that the home can't be sold without coming back to us and saying, Twin Pines, what do you wanna do about this? But the homeowners generally are hearing from us quite a bit. You know, we work to provide them with assistance and during the course of their ownership. And so, so they come to us when they say, I'm, I'm ready to sell, help me, help me sell this. So that's how we, we've got a legal mechanism, and that's the other way. Oh, so I'm gonna just say, you know, and I've got four more slides. We're going kind of, you know, I'm trying, I'm conscious of the time here, I think I've got ten minutes. I'll keep talking fast. So Grafton Windsor County, we took Mayor Matt County off, but it kind of gives you a sense of the income tiers. So most of the programs are geared towards households at or below sixty percent. This is for a family of four. An individual might be, you know, is going to be, you know, fair nevertheless. But it gives you kind of a sense of what we're talking about and who we're trying to serve. Some of the projects that we showed you, that new turnkey development in White River, we got some extra money from, we got some money courtesy of Dartmouth Health, Dartmouth College, Massoma Bank, and and others, King Arthur among them, that allowed us to basically have some units that serve folks at eighty to a hundred percent of AMI based on family size. And so those are people, you know, who'd be maybe making, you know, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand. But when the cost of housing is twenty five hundred bucks a month, that's not something that everybody can afford. So there's a, there's a need at that price point as well. So a couple of slides here, just on how the financing that we use. So primary program I mentioned is the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Federal government allocates tax credits to the states, states allocate it to eligible projects. They're sold to investors, and the proceeds are then used to develop the housing. So so this is the primary mechanism that we're using to finance the construction of this kind of housing. And investors get the tax credits, they reduce their tax liability dollar for dollar over ten years. And we take the dollars that they pay for those tax credits. And now we've got cash equity that we put in, into the housing. And in exchange, we agree to rent the households, rent the units to households with incomes less than sixty percent.
So, who buys, who buys the?
Credits.
The tax, I mean, that would be like, not home, I mean, not average people. These are.
No, so the, so the, so typically, these are, these are very sophisticated buyers. So, in northern New England, the primary buyer is this group called EverNorth. I serve on board of it, so full disclosure. But Massoma Bank is an equity investor, Ledger Bank, Bar Harbor Bank, many of the smaller banks that, there's a lot of small banks in northern New England. But M and T is a, is an investor and.
So, they attack credits?
So, they're getting the tax benefits. And they're typically paying, if, if, if a dollar of tax, a dollar of credit, at this point, it's probably selling for about eighty, eighty-three, eighty-four cents on the dollar. So, so if you're selling a million dollars of tax benefits, it flows over ten years. So, that's ten million dollars worth of tax benefits, a million dollars per year over ten. And you're paying eighty-three cents, you're gonna generate eight point three million dollars worth of equity. That equity allows us to put it into the project and reduce what we have to borrow, what we have to fundraise for. The balance is often, you know, funded by other sources of debt, or could include some debt. But it also includes other grant funds that we may get from the state and federal governments.
But, yeah, 'cause I just asked a stupid question. So, they, so if the bank buys this, they're taking the taxes that they would pay on what?
On their, on their income, on their earned income.
Okay, earned income.
Yeah, so they're, they're able to use it to offset their tax obligations on a dollar for dollar basis. So, so the banks like it. They are typically looking at about, in this market right now, about a seven and a half, well, it's a little bit tighter now, anywhere from five and a half to seven and a half internal rate of return. Plus, they also, the banks like it because they also get Community Reinvestment Act credit. So, the federal government, the Office of the Comptroller of the Currency, which regulates banks, looks at their Community Reinvestment Act activity. And, and so this is a plus. They're investing in affordable housing. So, it's, it's, and it's very, it's a very stable investment. The, the historic loss rates for these kinds of projects is less than half a percent, ever. Ever, in the, in the nearly forty years of the program. What do we need? What do we need to create housing? Okay, here we go. So, you know, we've, we've looked at a bunch of projects. Land is often a big thing. Sometimes we have municipalities look at their, what, what they're looking for, what they're in terms of their land that they have access to. Sometimes they then turn around and make it available to us. Hannover, for example, they had existing senior housing, they made that available to redevelop and add more housing. They also had, went the land up at Guile Hill, which the town made available.
Hundred percent of the projects in Hannover have been, you know, town provided the land.
Yeah. And, and so, you know, Lebanon, it was making other lands available right now for housing. So, it, that is, that is not uncommon. Zoning, you know, one of the big issues we look at is does the zoning permit density to make it pencil out? And that is size of projects. These are, there are some big projects in there for our region. Not every project's gonna be that size. Sometimes the projects that we're doing might be twenty-one units. They might, but, but we've also been in response to trying to do better in terms of meeting demand for housing. We've done bigger projects, but we've also been able to do bigger projects over the last few years because of federal stimulus money. And that money has now been, been expended, that COVID relief money. And so, so I suspect that over time, the projects are actually, particularly in our region, northern New England, we're gonna see the projects getting smaller rather than bigger. And they're more expensive, which means that the resources that are available have to, you know, available are gonna be funding. As construction costs up, go up, they're gonna be funding fewer projects, smaller, smaller projects.
Yeah, 'cause it sounds like now you need fifteen to twenty units now to make it really feasible.
Yeah, I mean, we, so the small project we have up there is eighteen.
Smallest.
And that's, that's the smallest that we're, that we're kinda doing at this point.
Right, right.
In part because, you know, if you, if you've only got a thousand dollar a month rent, it, you know, it's, it's, we have certain expenses, like an audit. We pay an audit fee every year, eighty-five hundred dollars, because we've got all these tax benefits. The investors wanna know that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and that they're getting the tax benefits that they bargained for. And so, so, you know, if you, better to have eighty-five hundred dollars in audit fees spread across more units. So, that's normal.
Right, and, and I think you just said, the, the reason for density, the reason for more units is you've got all these fixed costs up front. And just if you can defray them across more units.
It, it, it works better, you know. And the other thing that I wanna touch on, that can sometimes have a real cost implication is water and sewer. So, water and sewer is one of the biggest challenges. We talked about it in London. Woodstock, we, I'm, I'm mindful of the fact we come up on eight o'clock and it's, and it's warm in this room. Woodstock, the AquaDuck company, private company, is now being municipalized, which is good. It is a good thing. The cost of capital available to, to upgrade and repair that system, maintain it, is much lower if it's municipal than if it is private.
Same, Hannover found the same thing.
And Hannover found the same thing. And, you know, I connected Julia with Charlie Kimball in Woodstock and Eric Duffy, the town manager, because of that experience. And I think it was helpful. But water, you know, as a developer, one of the challenges that we have is doing projects. I would, I will say, you know, it's very, very challenging to ask somebody to do a water system for a larger project. Because if you do it over a certain size, you trip into, you know, being regulated as a, as a, as a water system. And as a public water system, you have higher standards. It's people's health. I'm not arguing that this is a bad thing. I'm simply saying it's often expensive. And it can be, there's, one of my peer organizations has a project down in the south central part of Vermont. They're spending a hundred and thirty-eight dollars per unit per month for water. If you're charging eight hundred and fifty, nine hundred dollars a month for rent, that's where your money's going. Like, it, it hemorrhages, that project hemorrhages money because, because they're spending so much on water. That member's crazy. And, you know, you can get into a project and find out, boy, and I'm trying to remember what, what element, what mineral element is, is causing that problem. But they have, they have to treat the water and it's expensive. And, and so that's a challenge. And lastly, you know, I'll just say, you know, the financing, we talked about the tax credits. It's surprisingly competitive. There are not enough credits to do a lot of projects. So, New Hampshire, Vermont, both get the same amount of credits, even though the population's twice in New Hampshire what it is in Vermont. They both get small state minimums. And it's very, very competitive to get that financing. They look at, you know, is it walkable? Are there services nearby? Is it on, you know, obviously water and sewer can be, can be issues as well in financing some of these deals. So, with that, it's eight o'clock.
I think, I think we're happy.
Happy to take questions. Yeah, and, and hopefully, hopefully, you know, this was a little bit, there's a lot of material here. I recognize it. Happy to have you share that with, with the members here later on, because if you've got questions, but feel free to shoot, shoot in.
I got one.
Sure.
Have you done any projects where the development's not on water and sewer and had to do a community septic or developed a local?
I'm sure the answer is not in a long time. So, we have, we have two properties, one in Lebanon and one in, in Queche that are on septic.
Shared septic system?
Nine, nine-unit septic system. So, so I'm less, personally, I'm less worried about the septic because, you know, assuming that you can get soils and get it to perk and all that kind of stuff. I'm not an engineer and I don't plan to do one. But, but that always feels a lot more manageable. Whereas, you know, if you get an option on a property and you go in and you decide, okay, I'm gonna drill a well here, I'm only going, you know, keep going in, in New London with all of this well drilling. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on engineers drilling wells and all this kind of stuff. And we're not gonna be able to use it. But we had a foundation that was, was willing and able to support that work. And that made a big difference. But without that, it's incredibly risky to, 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 to deal with some of the challenges around water.
Well, I mean, we used to have a little municipal system here and it wasn't run by the town, it was a private water system.
Yeah.
And when the rules changed in New Hampshire, they disbanded. So, now we've got a couple of households on each well.
Yeah.
So, they just dissociated.
Yeah.
And because of the testing requirements and stuff.
It, it's a challenge. I mean, it's a challenge across the Upper Valley. Bedford's been looking at their water systems and they've got not one, not two, but not three, but four different water companies. We have anywhere from, you know, I think the smallest one had twenty users at this point. Maybe there's one that's ninety, maybe it's seventy. It's, you know, it's, those are, those are kind of challenging.
Yeah, so, so would you partner with a municipality that set up a water system for you? If it, you know, weren't like, I mean, set up a, you know, well-based water system?
It's worth a conversation.
Is it? Yeah, okay.
It's worth a conversation to kind of dig into it.
Just, you know, 'cause Lime doesn't have much to offer that way. We don't, and we also, we don't have services.
Yeah.
Like, you know, right across from high school and walking distance to CVS and the co-op and advanced transit. So, you know. And does community commitment factor into the?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, you have, you have a robust community nursing program here. Those things make a difference. You know, are there other organizations willing, you know, in the region to provide services here to the extent those are?
Well, we have CCL, I mean, that's like, yeah, the parish nurses. It's both really good. I mean, they're different kinds of services.
But those make, make, make a difference.
How do you decide where to?
And I also, I don't wanna, I see hand up there as well.
No, go ahead.
Okay, sorry.
No, no, no.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Andrew, thank you so much. You've done so much, you've helped so many people in the Upper Valley and, and wider community. The question I have is, I'm, I'm one of the people who is spending much more than thirty percent of their income on the rental apartment and utilities.
Yes.
It, it's, it doesn't feel good.
No.
The, the question I have is, what is the timeframe from concept to fini? I know it's kind of a nebulous question or something hard to pinpoint, but roughly with, from concept to finish a project?
Yeah, so, you know, that's a, that's a great question. Hannover, I wanna say it took us five years of, of kind of really digging into it to get there. You know, knowing that the, in part, you know, in that particular instance, there were alternative uses that, you know, a portion of the site were, was being considered for. And that kind of slowed things down a little bit. And that, that can happen. You know, I had a, I thought the Fairfield Inn was going to be relatively quick process. The town of Hartford changed their zoning to allow that conversion. They had, they had extended use hotels as an allowed use in that area. That doesn't work for the tax credit program. We needed it to say multifamily is allowed. And so, they amended their zoning code to allow multifamily housing as a conditional use in that zone. But that process, which was anticipated to be three to six months, took fourteen months. And so, and meanwhile, my hotel owner is like, I just wanna sell. And, and so, so, you know, that, that one was relatively quick in the sense that, you know, it took about three years, including the fourteen months that we spent on the zoning change. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, how, how do you select projects? I mean, you know, do people come to you? Do communities come to you? Do private individuals come to you?
Yeah.
Or do you?
Yeah, so.
Scope things out yourselves? I mean.
You know, I'm, I'm, I will always tell my, my compatriots from other parts of the country, I feel really blessed to work in the Upper Valley. Because people bring me projects. People, towns bring me projects. Civic organizations bring me projects. And say, this is what we want you to do. And this is what we are seeking for a need. This is an opportunity that we have. And, and I'm not sure that's always the case in other parts of the country. And frankly, the generosity of communities is often, you know, pretty astounding in terms of the dollars that we're able to raise to help support the work that we do. So, I feel lucky. But, you know, I might very well have a municipality like Hannover will come to us. Lebanon can come to us with a particular project. Sometimes it's another developer. D W brought us the, the concept of doing the turnkey. They brought that to our attention. Sometimes I scope it out. Sometimes I look at the, the zoning map in a community and I say, okay, well, this is a great opportunity. So, the Tracy Street project, Tracy Street's right behind Massoma Bank, they're on, on, on Main Street there, you know, West Lab. And I went to the bank and said, hey, here's a great opportunity to do something with this large parking lot that you have. And we can take care of some, some, some sort of rundown old properties on Tracy Street. And you get to help buy the credits, be the construction lender, be the current lender on this. It's gonna be great. And, and they, they worked through the process with us. We have all these kinds of different cross easements to access the project through the parking lot of, of the, of Massoma Bank. And they're an incredible partner. So, you know, sometimes it's, 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 it's finding a good partner to, to do things. St. Paul's Church, where we did seven forty-seven, they brought that to us. And they said, we would like to do something to support the Haven. We helped found the Haven. We wanna do something on our campus. Help us do that. And, and so, that was the church driving that, that process. So, lots of different ways. There is no one way, for sure.
Do you guys ever buy like mobile home parks?
Yeah, so, great question. And we have in our portfolio, I think you saw at the beginning, one mobile home park, nine units. We have looked at two, to, we really kicked the tire on two other projects, like spent a bunch of time. And ultimately chose not to move forward. Vermont has a statute that encourages, that basically requires that residents be given the opportunity to purchase the parks when they go on for sale, or that it be offered to a nonprofit. And, you know, there, there's sometimes, sometimes the capital needs are significant, so significant that, you know, we might very well choose not to proceed with it. In New Hampshire, we're really lucky because, you know, this is, the New Hampshire Community Loan Fund started something called Rock USA, resident-owned and controlled, uh, mobile home parks program. And that, Rock USA really is in the space to encourage owners, you know, residents to become owners of the parks in which they, they live. It provides technical assistance and financial assistance to help make that happen. And that's a huge benefit. So, there's, there's a good way to make parks affordable. I, I will simply say this. I think that there's an opportunity to, you know, think about mobile home parks, particularly. about mobile home parks, particularly as construction costs rise. Because, um, you know, it is a less expensive way to get people into housing. It is not, particularly if, if you're getting into a newly built, manufactured home, not something that was pre-seventy-eight, not something that's, uh, energy inefficient. You really gotta have something new, but it's something we, we are looking at periodically.
Some, not bad.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, um, some of the more modern, energy efficient homes, you can get a passive home that is, you know, um, excuse me, you can get a net zero home with solar panels on it and, and, you know, pay fifteen dollars a month for, you know, your electric hookup and that's it, which is very, very good.
This is great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, hopefully it's given you something to think about.
Yeah. I, I guess, just one other question, as, as you're looking from the outside in, um, are there other means or of a community getting, uh, more housing or affordable housing that wouldn't necessarily involve you, but, um, you've seen to be successful, uh, in other communities, especially communities without water and sewer?
Um, you know, I, I, I know everybody has talked about ADUs as, as, as a tool to increasing it and, you know, to the extent that, um, folks are willing to add a unit and, um, make that unit available to somebody in the community or a family member who needs that housing, that is, uh, that is a plus. And I, I really encourage communities to think broadly about, you know, housing. It doesn't, you all need to look like a forty unit building, uh, in, in White River. You know, it comes in many forms and flavors and, and I think ADUs are, you know, and I do think, I think there is a role for, for, um, mobile home parks as well. If you have a larger regional need for housing.
Yeah, cause it, it's interesting. We've had, I mean, people have had the ability to build ADUs in Lyme for thirty-five years, and there's been hardly any built.
Yeah.
You know, it's really interesting.
It's expensive. I mean, it is expensive and sometimes, you know, figuring out, um, you know, I, I, I kicked, I kicked that can for like a, 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 a day, uh, thinking that I was gonna get my father-in-law to come here from Ohio. And, oh, well, fill in the little ADU out of, um, the back, back of the lot. And, you know, you get involved and then you're trying to figure out, okay, what do we need to do for upgrading the septic? You know, what am I doing in terms of well, getting the well over, you know, water over there? And it's, it's, um, you know, it's, it's.
A lot of money, yeah.
It's a lot of money and it's not always a simple project, um, so.
In fact, I went to some comforts at Hartford High in the spring.
Yeah.
And the zoning people were really proud of themselves. They said, it is a piece of cake. All you gotta do is this, and this, and this, and then you gotta start with a fire marshal, and then you gotta do this, and this, and this, and, and this was the simplified procedure. And, and in fact, I believe them. I'm sure it was much better than it used to be.
Yeah, it's all relative.
But it's still, there's still a lot of work.
It's a, it's a lot of work and, uh, you know, if you're, if you're, you know, already working full-time or, you know, got kids or doing both, um, you know, the, the, they having the bandwidth to kind of take on a, a major construction project can sometimes be.
Keen, Keen's having a design competition.
Yeah.
For ADUs.
There, there, there are, there are committees that are really being very creative, trying to, yeah, to do that. Employer assisted housing is another area, um, that we, you know, definitely had conversations. You know, not, you don't have a lot of, um, employers that may be looking to get into the housing space, um, but over the years, I've certainly had, you know, major resorts in our region. I've had, uh, civic, uh, you know, museums and, uh, environmental organizations come to me and say, hey, can you do something for us? It's not really, in Twin Kine's case, not really what we do, um, but it speaks to, um, you know, the seriousness with which a lot of employers are, are facing this because they can't get and retain employees. In the case of the Woodstock Inn, they went ahead and bought a motel.
And they already owned a lot of houses.
Yes, they already owned a bunch of houses all over Woodstock, so, yeah.
Didn't the theater company in White River Junction do something?
Yeah, so, and we, we had, you know, we had, um, uh, conversations with them, um, and when, at one point, they were thinking, well, let's try to do something bigger. They ultimately kind of scaled down to what was, what is being built now. But they're, yeah, they're, they're, they built housing because they are required by their union contracts, cause these are artists who are, are in a union, and as part of that, they are required to provide housing. So, and they need short-term housing where, um, you know, we're really looking for a twelve-month lease at a minimum. So.
Great.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions or?
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I always, I always love to do the, the Dog and Pony Show and kind of talk about what we do and, and, uh, it's, it's great to hear the conversation that, that you're having.
Well, it's good to learn about.
Yeah.
You guys, cause I mean, we, you know, we hear about you for years. We really don't know exactly how it works.
Yeah, it's, um, it's, uh, the tax credit piece, I, you know, I said to my CFO when, when we hired her back in twenty fifteen, I said, you'll never be bored. Cause this is the structure that we use for all of these developments. And so, you know, today we have twenty-two tax credit partnerships with limited, uh, you know, limited partners that we need to get K ones to and general partners that we have to manage and make sure that their returns are filed. It is, um, it is like a lot of paperwork. And we could argue whether it's the most efficient program to build, uh, affordable housing. It, it works and it, it enjoys bipartisan support in, you know, in this world. That, that may be, uh, that may be, you know, uh, the best we can do is, you know, a bipartisan program like that, so.
Great.
Great.
Well, thank you very much.
Happy to, happy to.
And we, we don't have any other questions from the audience.
Uh, ask Lenora Marine, do you have any questions? Marine, go.
I can't, I, I'm all set, I think, for now, but, uh, thank you very much. You've given us some, a little hope and, uh, when you mentioned about the washer dryer, um, lugging it down to Lebanon is getting a little much, so.
Yes.
I, I hope we can work with the planning board up here. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. You're welcome.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Marine, you're, uh, still muted, so we can't hear you if you were saying something.
I don't have a question. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I will see you all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Good to see you all.
Okay, um, hope we can move on to other items here. Lenora is on the line, I believe, and I'd like to, if people will indulge us, um, maybe switch the order of the, uh, agenda to, uh, address the appointment of Lynn Parshall.
Okay.
As an alternate member of the zoning board.
So right now, we have three members of the zoning board out of five, and I've been trying to get more, have not had much luck. But Lynn Parshall, um, was a member for about three years and then got very busy and had to get off. And actually, I talked to her at the, the last forum, and she agreed that she would come back as an alternate.
Huh.
And so, um, I would like to ask the board to appoint Lynn Parshall as an alternate.
Are there other alternates or is she the only?
She is the only one.
Okay.
Only the one. So wait, wait a second. So I volunteered to do this.
Yeah, you volunteered to, uh, well.
Well, it went, I think David took it to the plan, the select board.
Let me back down a little bit. Three members are of the zoning board are appointed by the planning board and two members are appointed by the select board. The only, right now, the only open position, there, we have one member who is kind of out on maternity leave, probably going to come back, um, but she's still.
That's Helena?
Yeah, that's Helena. And so we have one position open that is a select board appointed. I gave your name, uh, they chose not to appoint you.
And never got back to me. Never heard one word.
I apologize for that, but I.
Not anything ever. And they, they took all the other appointments in public session and went into private session to discuss me, so.
Yeah, I, I, that's. The, the select board, I, you know, I, it took me a long time to get information back also.
Yeah, so.
I'll make a motion because, um, actually, this is an appointment that we can make and the permanent member isn't, so.
Right, all the alternates are appointed by the, the planning board.
So for Lynn, and I'll just put that out there, and if someone wants to second it, then we can have conversation.
I'll second it. But no, I just have another question. If, at some point, it'll, it'll come up that the planning board can appoint somebody, right?
Correct.
I mean, at some point, and we could appoint.
Yes, but once, when a member goes off, uh, well, the, the member, if they'd like to be.
Planning board appointed member.
Yeah, one of the planning board, one of the three that are appointed by the planning board, uh, decide that they don't wanna be a board member anymore.
Right.
Now, when their term is up, I'll come back to the board and ask them to read if they wanna continue.
And if they don't, then we get to appoint them.
Well, yeah, you would still have to appoint them, um, but I think if you have an active member, I, um, who wants to continue to be an active member, I just think it's a poor decision to not appoint them.
Right, I mean, if they don't wanna.
If they don't do, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will.
Then we get to appoint somebody.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, she, uh, Lynn has been on the board previously.
She was on the board for about three years.
Uh-huh.
Uh, she is an attorney, so she is.
She's come to our meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, she's a very, very smart lady and, uh, a very good thoughtful member of the board, um, and I wish she had never gone off, but.
Okay. Well, we have a, um, motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, um, to appoint, uh, Lynn Parshall to, as an alternate to the zoning board? If not, I'll take a vote. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A pose? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Lynn, if, if you're, if you're still there.
I don't think anyone, there's no one there.
She's not been on.
She wasn't there.
She wasn't, it's just Lenora and.
All right, um, well, thank you for the, uh, information.
Thank you. It's, very much appreciated getting somebody to, um.
So we also have the minutes of October twenty-fourth, which I thanked Tim for.
David wasn't present at that meeting.
Taking those, so are these, is this your type version or did, um?
This is my version.
David.
This is, it's Kim.
I'm not the greatest, yeah, so what I did was I just tried to take some of the high points of it.
That's fine, but David wasn't there.
Yep, I have my name, all right, crossed out.
I was, I was working the, uh, the computer, remember?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, well, that took a down in history.
Well, it does say board member.
It says, it says he's absent.
It says.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't also indicate he was present.
I thought I had that right.
He's absent, no, he was absent.
Right, under, under absent.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
He was still at the hospital during the entire meeting.
Yes.
So I had a, a few edits if anybody, yeah, will indulge me here. So, under item two, um, wrote Sandwich applied to, applied for and received a hop, uh, I think we should maybe, uh, indicate what that is, a housing opportunity planning, parentheses, uh, for, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct.
And then, uh, this was used to hire Barrett Consulting Group to help, uh, with a town and then I would add housing audit.
I'm gonna ask for your notes just to.
Yep, I'll, I'll give you those, um, and identify barriers to development and zoning. And then the next sentence starts, uh, the, I would add sandwich planning boards, and then I would say proposed zoning amendments for March twenty-twenty-four town meeting, uh, enabled, and then go into the two family or duplex units.
Yeah.
To be completed in the large existing buildings in town. Uh, and then the next, uh, two sentences later, um, where you say the next focus, I would just change that to Sandwich's next focus will be unencouraging.
Yeah.
So that was what I had. Rich Brown, do you have any?
Uh, I, I, I think Susan McCloud's name is M A C, uppercase L E O D.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah, I never, I guessed, I guess. I didn't know it was.
Right, I, I, I Googled it or so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's all I saw.
The only, I wanted to ask about, since I wasn't there, um, the acceptance of the minutes, um, there's a, now the move to approve the minutes is submitted with changes from Rich Brown. Do you wanna just say? You know, prove the minutes as amended?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I actually found the warrant article from Sandwich, if anybody wants to know the ten, ten things that they put.
I would be very interested in that.
I'll send it to you.
Yeah, they, they were listed on the, on the slides, I think.
Yes, they, but they were tiny.
But they were tiny. I found the actual warrant article on the town website.
So it, it took them ten, uh, articles to?
Oh, it was things like.
ADUs?
Not ADUs, but it was like, they had other things like, um, you could build in a steep slope for a certain percentage.
Uh-huh.
So, you know, it, it was quite granular about what they were doing.
Then there was some stuff about the duplex.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the, there were three different sets of them. You know, I, I sent, uh, all the slides, I don't know where they, I think they're in there. Not the slides that Susan did, but there were a bunch of, um, slides that.
Were on the town's website.
Were available on the town's website, which I think I sent to you.
Yeah, I do have to.
And I thought everybody that.
I thought we got those.
Yeah, so if you look in those, you, you probably all can find a lot.
Yeah, okay. Anybody have any other changes? If not, I'd accept a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favors, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Did you move for any addition?
Yeah, not.
That move?
I seconded.
And here are my changes.
Thank you.
So we have another meeting next week.
All right.
And, um. Sorry. Feel better.
I can see you, yes.
Talking sideways here.
Yeah, talking to your ear.
Yeah. So, uh, we have Jonah Richard and, uh, Jamie Rogers. And, um, have they both confirmed that they're coming here?
Yeah, they confirmed, but I will email Jonah again and even maybe try to call him again, in itself, just to make sure, remind him, cause he's a little scattered.
Busy.
But he, he confirmed, I gave him the date, I gave him the time, and I, he said he could look up where the town offices are on GPS.
Okay.
But I'll try to, you know, make, remind him again.
Okay.
Right, we'll remind him again.
Right, and I'll do the same for Jamie.
Terrific, and so.
Jamie's, uh, I can't remember what Jamie's.
She's at, uh, Margaret Pratt.
Oh, okay.
Margaret Pratt.
Yeah, way up on the hill there, you know.
So senior housing and what does it look like?
So, um, I also apologize that I asked David to put this on the website and I don't know if I asked him to put it on the server, but.
It just slipped my mind, I apologize.
It didn't get on there. And I'm really kind of bummed out that that didn't happen because we've had.
I just seemed like a missed opportunity.
Yeah.
I don't make, I actually have it embedded on my sheet here for.
Once Rich gets it posted, then we can send out a notice to say if you happen to miss this one, like with the one for next week, if you happen to miss this one, here's the link so they can watch it.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
I mean, why not? But actually, she's the first one too.
Is this, was this also on Zoom? I mean.
Yes, it's been, it's recording, we're, we're still being recorded.
So, when you say, so are we going to reference what Rich has recorded here, or are we going to reference what the Zoom?
You don't, do you keep it?
I do keep it for a while, but it's, uh, I don't, our website does not support video.
So, that's why.
So, I can't, yeah, which is really a bummer.
To the French.
That.
YouTube.
Yeah, so.
Actually, could, could I?
Send me the, the message again.
I'll send you the link, yes, okay.
Yeah, and I'll just upload it to your, and you can put it up on YouTube, and then if you'd send me a link back.
That's great, yes, okay, Dave, David.
Can we get in our, any communications about this, to put the links to the meetings that we have had? So, if people want to watch those, that they can, so they don't feel like they missed it.
So, I'm, I was scattered here, so how are we going to get this out to the public?
I'm going to send the Zoom video, which will include all this that we're talking about now, to Rich. Rich will post it to his account on YouTube. Send me the link to the, the YouTube.
Yep.
Version, and we can post that too. So, if you want to watch, here's the.
So, that's, we're going to put that both on the, on our website.
Yep.
But then we're also going to, um, put that on the line list serve as well.
Yep.
Advertising the.
Like I say, I've already have it noted to, remind me to put it out.
And, yeah, I mean, if we could get that out either tomorrow or Monday.
Yeah, well, it'd be Monday, so it'll be, have to be tomorrow.
Okay.
We're closed on Monday, which is all day.
Well, I don't know why we wouldn't do it on Tuesday then. So, tomorrow and another time next week, people don't.
Oh, put it on twice?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you mark your calendar and not go to the meeting that night instead, and I could have done here.
And then you remember.
Yeah, yeah.
David, what would it take to have the capability of, of video or whatever on the website?
Uh, it would be very easy, we'd have to completely change companies that host the, the website. Go through a complete and total revamp of the website.
And videos take up a lot of space.
Yeah, we're not going to do it.
And then the nice thing, the one thing I can do is, if I link a YouTube video, you can watch it from our website. It just, they won't, and the reason they won't host it is videos are huge. The, the files are huge.
But if you look at it on YouTube, you can also watch it at one and a half speed, and it's perfectly sensible.
And you get all kinds of advertisements to watch too.
They're always good. You never know.
I'm going to have to ask you how to do one and a half speed.
Oh, it's easy. There's a little gear in the lower right. If you click on that, it pops up and if you go one and a half, one and a half, two.
This is a YouTube?
Yeah.
Just speed it up. Totally good for your.
So, if you download anything to YouTube, you can then play with it like that?
Well, you don't download YouTube, you have to watch it on YouTube.
Just start it up, and it down at the lower right corner is that gear, and you can, you can watch it in half speed.
I was just going to find something appropriate.
But MOV files don't have that.
No, you, well, depends on the software that you're using to watch them. If the software that you have to watch them allows it, then.
How about PowerPoint?
I have no idea.
Yeah, okay. I'll hang it off.
So, uh, so we've got this meeting next week, and then we are off for Thanksgiving. I don't think anybody wants to meet, and then we'll be meeting again in December.
On the 12th, and I have, uh, work for you.
Oh, okay. Maybe you can tell us about that.
It is a little line line adjustment. That involves, uh, I think Leewood, one, two, three, four, five, six. It involves several hundred acres. And, um, going from.
So, where did you?
To and from Bear Hill Conservancy to the National Park Service.
Oh, it's that little gear thing.
It took me about an hour of looking through the files to figure out what was going on.
I see.
So, I would ask that you do spend some time looking at this.
Every once in a while, I learn something.
It is. Um, a little confusing at the onset. Their description is, of the project is lacking.
Yeah, I think they, I mean, I shouldn't, I'm not 100% sure, but I think what, the overall thing is, I think the land is being transferred to the Appalachian Trail.
Right.
So, it, it's being cemented, traded to the Appalachian Trail Association will get this land, it will benefit them.
Well, it's, there, there, there's land transfers to and from.
Right.
There, there's a section of the Appalachian Trail that is not owned by the, uh, the National Park Service. And so, they're establishing corridor, um, through, uh, it, it's down, um, basically between Goose Pond Road and the Dartmouth Ski Way. That section, the trailer goes through there, there's a large section that is not owned by the National Park Service. If you know where, uh, Mike.
What are these?
What are, yes.
Bliss Lane?
Um, out behind his property, um, to the east of his property, of Bliss Lane and Backside.
That's where we went.
And so, they're trying to establish that, so they're going to take a corridor of land that's owned by Bear Hill Conservancy and attach it to a piece they have that's further north, and then there will be some swapping of land.
Right, right. Yeah, I think it's a good deal for everybody, from what I understand, it's a good deal.
I, again, that's not my.
So, is there?
Victoria.
Um, you have.
Jack something. Jack something.
Yeah, he's trading.
Um, well, you have, um.
They said Jacob Thurl.
Yeah, he is the Africanian engineer, and then you have.
Oh, he's the engineer.
Yeah, I believe Nicholas Craig is the, um, representative from, uh.
Is that Bear Hill?
Nope, from the National Park Service, and then Bear Hill Conservancy Trust is.
So, is there a narrative that tells us what they're trying to do somewhere?
There is a narrative, unfortunately, if you look at it, it's on the second page at the very top, and it's the description of the project.
So, David, where they say Bear Hill Trust, they mean the Bear Hill Conservancy Trust?
Yes.
Because is that anywhere explained?
Yeah, I just got this two days ago, so I'm.
Where are you seeing it is called Bear, oh, Bear Hill. On the map, it's Bear Hill Trust.
About everything is called Bear Hill Trust, but it's the Bear Hill Conservancy Trust. No, I know, I'm looking at the map, on the map, the map. Every, you know, and then they have this little thing, the Bear Hill Conservancy Trust, is that the same or not? I mean, it's.
I can tell you, you know, looking at the properties, yes, it's, it is the Bear Hill Conservancy Trust.
Yeah, but aren't they supposed to have the names?
Yeah, that would be something to have that.
So, if, instead of Victoria Smith, they said Vicky Smith's Land, I mean, you know.
Oh, Victoria.
Uh, as I said, I just got this a couple of days ago.
It's the same, you know, it's this, it's not common to put a nickname.
No, exactly.
Um, as a property owner.
Oh, I see, look at that. Circles and arrows on the back.
I wish there was a paragraph describing each one.
Are they planning on having? Somebody represent?
Yes, Jacob Thurl will be here.
Okay. Have we worked with him before, or has he presented anything?
No, not that I, not since I've been here.
It's so turned around.
It's, uh.
All of a sudden, north is here, all right.
That's, that's one of the big things that threw me trying to look at this, comparing it to the actual tax map.
Yeah.
It's off by not quite 90 degrees, and so, um, you know, say Goose Pond Road is down here.
And here's that.
And so, you need to almost rotate it 90 degrees.
I'm standing at the Dartmouth Ski Way, I'm looking out.
So, the other thing is, I mean, in some cases, Margaret Sheehan is the, is the owner, and in other cases, Sheehan is the owner. And then Colback Trust, and then there's the Samuel Colback Rockable Trust. You know, that's sloppy. Those should be, if they're the same owners, should be called the same thing.
And, yeah, that would be something to, to discuss with Jacob when.
Yeah. Yep.
You know, I'm still going through and making sure they have all the butters and.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of butters.
Who is Bear, Bear Hill, is that?
Bear Hill Conservancy Trust, that's the trust that David Robey established.
Yeah, just making sure it was Robey.
Right. Actually, David, I have a, a question here. So, it says, that slot, all over David Robey, that over Colback's house. I believe that is. That makes good sense, okay, thank you.
That's, that's where they're showing the chain of title there.
Yep, yep. Like I say, I find these to be very busy maps, and so they're trying to understand what is.
Well, I think that's because they're also, um, this is the style that they use for doing the segment maps for the AT.
Yep.
So, you probably have a set of the segment maps, and then they'll just change the legend when they get done, and, and then they'll put the segment numbers on here, so.
Well, they also have, you know, National Park Service tracks, which is what they, you know, refer to in the description of the project. And trying to wrap my head around which, what they are talking about.
Right.
You know, which track is what lot.
Well, it's nice that they gave it to us, and, um, yeah, the Accra Lee, uh, Accra Lee, I'll see now. I'm sorry, and then here, um, yeah, they, Crookenden, is that Ann Crookenden, or is it some other Crookenden? You know, it's, it's like that, so.
And then, like I say, that's something to have them.
Yes.
Great.
David, would it be, would it be appropriate for you to inquire about, based on an informal, um, five second look at this in advance that, um, maybe you would want to ask? It, it's HEB that's going to come to represent this.
It's Jacob Thurl.
That, maybe you could ask.
Terry.
Jacob Terry, that's how I would.
Yeah, ask, ask him about this and.
But you know the British.
Is it possible for him to provide a different copy, um, at, at the meeting? Or, or do we have to render it incomplete and then have him come back?
Or, you can just ask him on the, the final copy to correct those things. I, I think, you know, I haven't spent as much time as I would like going through these, and I would hate to, um, send him just stuff piecemeal, to say, here, fix this, and then, then a week later, fix this. You know, I would rather at one meeting to go through and say, here are issues that the, the board has.
Okay.
And please correct all these things.
Yeah. Would it, would it not be appropriate, though, to just clue him in on the fact that we're seeing different.
I can.
Landowners, which we think might, might need to have some consistency, and that way, he can present that to us at, at least one copy of it or something, if it's appropriate, or, or he could at least be able to address it rather than saying, well, I, I gotta go back.
Yep.
When he says Robey, does that only mean David M. Robey, or does that?
Barbara Robey's report is referred to up here.
Right, so, yeah, so.
So, which Robey?
Yeah, which Robey is it? Yep.
Yeah, I think Barbara owes us things.
Yeah, and so does David Junior, so he's a Robey also.
These are the, um, the map lines for the sheets following.
Oh, I see.
Okay. So, um.
Please, please.
Big gray.
There, once again, it's not on the, that took me a minute because.
Because there's, it's not in the legend.
So, this, this square right here is Sheet V102.
Okay, so, yes.
And then Sheet V104.
It's this.
Yep.
I get you.
So, the top one is an overview, and then each sheet.
I'm going to have to clear off the dining room table.
Well, you can un, detach it and kind of mush them together yourself on the dining room table.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Ooh, ooh.
Yep, if you really want to make it unweeled.
Yeah.
Go through it.
I think we should all go over to Wiki's app and do this, then.
Let's have a one word meeting, that sounds like a good idea.
Or we can just stay late tonight and.
No, you can't, we can't look at this since we have the hearing.
So, when will that be?
Uh, that will be the 12th.
Yeah, because it's not close, it's not opposed.
Of December.
Yes. And just to let folks know, um, we're closed on Monday, and.
Is that Veterans Day or something?
I believe it's Veterans Day. And then the following two weeks, I am gone.
So, you're not going to be here for the?
I'll be here Thursday.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, we're going to have to get Vicky.
No, I, I will be here.
I'm not going to be here Thursday.
I will be here Thursdays, and then I'm going to take a half day on Friday, because I'm flying out to DC on, um, five o'clock on Friday, or Sunday, excuse me, Saturday morning.
But then you'll be back for the meeting in December.
I will be back. I'm actually, I'm only gone for 10 days to DC, and then I'll be back Thanksgiving week, but I'm taking that week off, because I have at least 13 people coming to the house for Thanksgiving dinner. I need to prepare.
So, you, so you're not miss, missing any, any more meetings?
No. That's why I did schedule this one for the 12th, because if we didn't do it, then, you know, we'd be pushing them off into January. Yep, and so, we're trying to.
Sounds good.
Well, that's fine.
Do we need to adjourn?
We have a.
Discuss anything.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Osoo.
Okay. Let's head out, thank you.
Can I ask you, home owners a question? If you want to disconnect the dash range and install a new one. Doesn't have to be the company that supplies the propane.
No, you can have a plumber.
Yep, because I, yeah, I'm having a terrible time getting burned.